Okay, we'll go ahead and get started for tonight's meeting of the Planning Commission. For those of you that aren't sure where you're at, we'll begin with a call to order. And would you please all rise and join me in a pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisibly with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Chair Wolf.
Here.
Vice Chair Roby. Member Friend.
Here.
Member List.
Here.
Member Lowery.
Here.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar, item 1.1, which is the agenda, and item 1.2, the minutes of our meeting of October 18th. Anybody have any comments or wish to pull anything?
I have a comment on the minutes, item 1.2, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we can dispose of the agenda, and let's move on to your comments.
I just want to make the observation on item 5.3, which was the conditional use permit for the request installation and use of a wireless communication facility, that we had public testimony that evening on that item as the necessity for the request, in particular that there was no problem with cell signal that this was, this item was planning to serve and rectify. And I want to go on record as saying that there absolutely is a service problem, in particular in the area of Upper Broadway at Point View, in one of the more challenged areas of our city, frankly, a very dangerous area. There's almost no cell signal there. And this item is already done. I just want to go on record as saying this will really help that, and it is a problem. And I think that the assertion that there is no need for it wasn't accurate, and I'm pleased that we didn't approve it.
All right, thank you. Any other response or comments on that? All right, so hearing nothing to the contrary, we'll assume the agenda and the minutes are adopted by unanimous consent. This is the point where we allow, we consider items of interest to the general public to listen to comments about items that are not on tonight's agenda. If any members of the vast public out here wish to address this, now's your opportunity. All right, we'll move on to item number four, written communications.
None that are not in tonight's packet that you already have.
All right, thank you. So we'll move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Item 5.1, a general plan amendment, zone change and amendment to plan development overlay, PD 06-01, which involves consideration and recommendation to City Council of City-initiated land use and zone map amendments for a parcel, a particular parcel, to allow for the optional development of 35 multifamily dwelling units and open space, a parcel plan for 20 single-family lots and open space under a previous, under a previous planned development. So we'll just go ahead and begin with staff report, please.
Yeah, the subject site's located on the north side of Ray Lawyer Drive, approximately 1,000 feet northeast of the intersection of Ray Lawyer and Placerville Drive. It's a vacant piece of property, approximately 3.63 acres in area. The site adjoins the Placerville Apartments to the west. To the east is a large vacant parcel, which is commonly known as the Odin Parcel. South of the site is the Eldorado County Fairgrounds. North is the Placerville Drive Commercial Corridor. The site has a land use designation of high-density residential and a zone classification of R3, which stands for medium-density multifamily residential. Excuse me, in 2008, the City Council approved the planning, excuse me, the Placerville Heritage Homes Plan Development Project, and that consisted of a tentative subdivision map of 20 parcels, site grading, road access, retaining wall, utility installation, tree canopy retention, and the set aside of 2.15 acres as open space. The project also involves some modifications to several development regulations under the R3 zone. To date, no final map has been recorded for this site under the plan development approval. No site improvements have been conducted. The property owner is actively marketing the site for sale, and the expiration of the tentative map and the plan development extend to June 24, 2020, and that's due to several state-passed statutes that extended life into this tentative map, or all tentative maps in the state. This particular project got the benefit of several of those, and therefore, again, the expiration of the plan development and the tentative subdivision map is in June of 2020. The request this evening is city-initiated. It is a component of the city's undertaking to rezone land to accommodate the city's unmet housing need for lower-income households under Program 3 of the most recently adopted 2013 to 2021 housing element. This request involves an amendment to the general plan land use map, the Placerville zoning map, an amendment to the Placerville Heritage Homes Plan Development, and it also involves an addendum to the mitigated negative declaration that was adopted for that plan development project. This project, tonight, our staff's city-initiated project, would place the housing opportunity overlay zone and land use designation on the subject property. The result of the request would allow a development option for construction of the site for multifamily purposes, multifamily uses, on the approximately 1 and 1/2 acres of land that's not set aside for open space. The, under the housing opportunity overlay, a total of 35 multifamily residential units, again, at that maximum density, under the housing opportunity overlay, which, just to remind of the commission, the range of density is 20 to 24. So staff looked at the worst-case scenario at 24 dwelling units per acre, which would generate 35 total multifamily units. Staff has proposed amendment to the plan development overlay, as approved by the council back in the mid-2000s, and would require that the design and the building elevations, under the housing opportunity overlay option, be substantially consistent with the architecture and the finished characteristics of the 2008-approved single-family residential elevations. I know I provided a very reduced copy in the packet. I have put it on the wall tonight, so if you guys want to take a larger look at it, you certainly can. But what the city wants to get out of and required, would be required for a multifamily development, would be the elevations need to have com, or similar multi-floor massing, roof gables, roof pitch, similar to what's shown there, exterior siding, decks, covered entries, et cetera, as well as finished materials, windows, and the like. The development potential impacts resulting from this housing opportunity overlay option would be mitigated under the mitigation measures for the approved project. Again, the approved project is the plan development from 2006. No new significant impacts would occur as a result of the housing opportunity overlay option. Staff has prepared an addendum to the mitigated negative declaration that was prepared and approved by council years ago. That's in your staff report and packet this evening for your consideration and recommendation to City Council. It's important to emphasize tonight that the city anticipated multifamily residential on the site when it designated and zoned the site for high-density residential uses back in the 1990s, when the general plan was adopted and subsequent to that, the amendments to our zoning ordinance, which, and maps, which created this particular designation on the site. So once again, the city anticipated multifamily development on the site. Tonight's request would help facilitate that as an option, but the owner or future owners would have the option to pursue, like the project that came before you recently at the rigid Orchard Hill, where they could pursue down the road of what was approved under the plan development, or they could choose the housing opportunity overlay option. The site also has other benefits to it because of its walking distance to commercial shopping, restaurants, employment sources, the library, commercial and professional services, and of course, the newly, newly-finished and constructed Boys and Girls Club. The commission undertook a review and made a recommendation earlier this year, again, as I mentioned regarding the rigid Orchard Hill, and that project recently went to City Council, and they did approve that, those amendments to that particular location. This is a very similar, if not the same, type of provisions we're requesting tonight for you to consider and make a recommendation to City Council. Therefore, staff is requesting the commission make recommendations that the council make the findings on page 15 of the staff report in support of the adoption of the addendum prepared by staff for the Placerville Heritage Home mitigation, mitigated negative declaration, then make a recommendation to adopt that addendum, make recommendations to adopt a resolution amending the general plan land use map for the 3.63-acre site by adding the housing opportunity overlay land use designation, adopt an ordinance amending the Placerville zoning map by adding the housing opportunity overlay zoning district, once again, for the 3.63-acre site, approve an amendment to the official development plan for the Placerville Heritage Homes Plan Development by authorizing the provisions of the housing opportunity overlay zone, and subsequent to that, to require that the residential construction under the overlay provisions meet the design and finished characteristics, consistent with the previously-approved single-family residential elevations that I talked about earlier. That concludes my staff report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And representing the owner is in the audience tonight, so.
Oh, okay. Before we open that part up, can we, any other initial questions of staff?
Andrew, thank you for your report, as always. With regards to the architectural considerations, the term substantially similar, we're not requiring identical, but substantially similar to what's been proposed.
No, I think the characteristic is kind of what we're looking for. We're looking at gabled, gabled architecture, we're looking for massing that's similar, we're looking for, am I calling out a specific finish? No.
Yeah, and that'll be, and that'll be an administrative staff assessment.
Right.
Okay, all right, great. And then, in terms of the issues of land use density, parking, traffic generation, and so on and so forth, those would get an actual evaluation at a time, a different project, if one's going to be forthcoming, would be submitted. We don't have a project under this ordinance change now. This is just simply providing an option.
Correct.
It sounds like a win-win, frankly, to me. It helps us with the housing element and so on and so forth. We already have the high-density very similar to that. Okay, great, thank you.
I think the first question I want to ask is, we're dealing with the city of Placerville is being classified as a suburban jurisdiction. Is there any process that we can get that changed?
I think the short answer is, no. The long answer is, there have been jurisdictions in the state that I'm aware of, one, well, I believe it, some jurisdictions in Marin County. They actually got statute, they got, they got law passed that designated one or two of those towns to be something that, that wasn't kind of what you're talking about. I don't know how they classified it, but they, they got, their law, the law was changed, so they got designated something else. And it gets to your point, because I think the, the density requirements and things like that were softened because of that designation. I can speak for, I believe, Director Revos, that we have gone down that road. We have talked to not only state legislative, our local representatives, and I think they told us that it would be kind of a difficult road to try to get a statute passed where the city of Placerville would be designated something that it is not currently. Perhaps you might want to facilitate a further discussion with that.
Sure, if I could add just a little bit, the city representatives did meet with Mr. Bigelow's office and Mr. Gaines' office to talk about different avenues of complying with the, with the state requirements. And as Mr. Painter pointed out, there were some Bay Area jurisdictions, and I think it was Marin County, that was able to get their designation changed so that the default minimum density was lowered. But I think their minimum density was a bit higher than it is for the city. I think it started at about 30 and was reduced to 20 or something like that, if memory serves. But, so we really don't have that option at this time. So I think the marching orders that staff has from, from the council is that when we complete cycle five housing element, which is 2013 through 2021, staff will be much more, let's just say diligent in reviewing and making a concerted effort that the arena number, our fair share allocation, is more commensurate with the growth and the demand that we would see in the city of Placerville.
Okay, thank you. The current drawing, site plan we're looking at, shows 20 parcels on the 1.43-acre portion. It does not indicate that there will be curbs and gutters, will be curbs and gutters, sidewalks?
That's actually on another exhibit that the developer applicant at the time, it's, and, yeah, I see Member Friend shaking his head. The packet that, that the applicant, the applicant's representative is in the audience, Lynette Ropp's in the audience tonight, yes, I'd be happy to share that with you. I don't have all of the exhibits, but yes, an exhibit that came before the Planning Commission and City Council did include a sidewalk, did include gutters. In fact, there was a parking exhibit, if, if Member Friend may remember. I know that was a discussion in this, in, by this body. They were concerned about those folks who were visiting, somebody who may live in the community and having the ability to have some on-street parking for that purpose. So I'm sorry I didn't provide that, but, but that was considered and part of the development plan.
My, my point is this, in Exhibit 3, yeah, Exhibit C, under 3, 3C, we talk about the minimums for the parcels, and the third one is a front yard. The minimum drops from 20 foot to 16 foot, .5 to the road right-of-way. If you add a curb and gutter in there, you're not going to be able to park a vehicle in front of a garage. So if we have curbs and gutters, and then we have a yard going up to a, up to a garage door, you can't park a car there unless you block the sidewalk. I, I have real concerns about that.
Yeah, I don't have the exhibit.
But my recollection is that road standard cross-section, that parking on the, and the road from, right-hand side, that road was designed to accommodate.
If I could help you out a little bit, I think, maybe, Andrew? On, in Exhibit E, entitled "The Placerville Heritage Homes Subdivision Plan Development Conditions of Approval," in item 49 under driveways, it says, "Provide a minimum of 20 feet between the back of concrete curbs when a sidewalk is present, to the face of the garage roll-up doors." So even though, it seems to me, then, even though the setback could be 16, you can't do it where you're going to have a garage. So they, they still have to have the accessibility you're looking for.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just would like to point out that the document is being referenced by Commissioner List as the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration, and so it's, it's characterizing the approved project, and so what's before you is actually just a rezone. We're not revisiting the original PD. It's, it's basically entitled, and so it still remains, and it's not subject to change.
But it is entitled with these conditions of approval, correct?
The mitigation measures, yes, and any applicable conditions of approval, but as far as if, if, if a developer were to come in with a apartment project, the apartment project would have to meet the minimum development standards of the zone district, not any of the setbacks that are, that are scheduled here in the single-family residential project. I just want to make that clear.
We don't, and we don't have the prior project in its entirety before, because that's not what we're considering.
Right. There are no changes to be made to the original PD, it's still in place. Again, I think what's being proposed here is the addition of the housing opportunity overlay, which will afford the property owner the ability of have, having a multifamily project instead of doing this single-family PD.
My, my other concern is that the parcel plan that we're looking at here has 20 parcels, and we're talking about 35 in the same square footage, or same acreage. And I, I'm, I find it hard to be able to, to come up with a good conclusion on that when I can't see what it really is going to look like when that's divided, and that area, instead of being divided by 20, is divided by 35.
I'm actually probably not, because you're looking at, you're probably only looking at several multifamily buildings, and so if somebody were to come in and build an apartment complex, they may not subdivide at all. This is a subdivision because it's, it's 20 individual, single-family lots, where what's being proposed is the ability to build an apartment complex, which may or may not involve any subdivision of the property at all.
Okay. I think dwelling, 35 dwelling units versus the 20 individual lots is kind of the distinction there.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, let's open the public hearing part of this, and we can hear from the, the project representative.
My name's Lynette Ropp, and I just want to commend the city for taking a proactive approach to fulfilling the low-income housing needs for the area. That's something that's close to our heart as well, and adding flexibility to the property. We're certainly receptive to that, and I don't really see any issues at all as far as adding this added overlay to the possibility and encouraging future developers to, to get in and get this infill project that we've been looking at for about a decade and visualizing in the county seat built. So I'm, I'm impressed that you're doing that, and I thank you for your hard work on this, and will respect your opinion on it.
Any questions, something about that? All right, thank you. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back for any further discussion. If there's, barring any further discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion. Okay, I move, we adopt the recommendations and findings, 1 through 3, in their entirety on page 15 and 16 of the staff report.
Second.
Do we have to, do we have to, does the motion require any reference to the proposed ordinance as well?
Well, yeah, it's in the, it's the items 3C, recommend the City Council adopt the ordinance and the amendment.
Okay. I'm just wondering, in the past, I think we've approved the ordinance separately.
Oh, okay.
We've approved the staff recommendation, and then we've, we've taken action. I, it's the pleasure of the chair, I just want to make the observation that we have.
Technically, you're just making a recommendation? You're not adopting any of these documents tonight? So in mass, okay?
Call the question, then.
Okay, call the question. Let's take a roll call vote, please.
Chair Wolf.
Aye.
Member Lowery.
Aye.
Member List.
Aye.
Member Friend.
Aye.
You guys can appeal to the City Council if this didn't quite work out. Okay, we'll move on to new business, item 6.1, Licensed Professional Document Submittal Requirements for Planning Commission Review. Upon the conclusion of discussion of this topic at our July 19, 2016 regular meeting, the Planning Commission requested that the staff place on a future commission meeting and agenda, on a, on a future meeting agenda, an action item involving plan submissions by licensed professionals for planning commission reviews. And so that discussion and possible action is what we have before us.
Well, staff really doesn't have a report. We did provide to you our current application forms to see, to show you what, how those read, and the other requirements that are, that are necessitate an application before you. In our workshop or discussion we had back in July, I believe I, I made reference to some examples from other jurisdictions where if it was a, like a physical, a project that involves physical construction of the, of a landform, then some jurisdictions require that a plan, a site plan be prepared by a licensed professional. For a project like our historic district reviews, where they're just changing out a window and maybe putting on siding or swapping out those types of things, then maybe a professional, a professionally-designed site plan isn't necessary. But I think this really came to the forefront when this body was reviewing the 618 Main Street project, the Wilber Howe parking lot. So that's all I have this evening. Again, this is an opportunity for you to request that staff make changes to any of these applications that are applicable with the appropriate documentation that you guys want to see moving forward. want to see moving forward.
All right, thank you. In fairness to my fellow commissioners, this item is here because I've been squawking about it and considering it for some time. Trying to get this out.
Get this out.
Yeah, there we go. So, I have the role of doing the mea culpa here in that I kind of got this up to the level of being an agenda item. You know, when you look at the documents the staff provided us regarding a site plan review application, the conditional use permit, and various applications, they're all silent on who may prepare such applications exhibits in support of those applications. And I think we're, I've seen it both as a planning commissioner and then being on the other side of the podium as an applicant, or the helpless person that has Item 8.1, while you're listening to other hearings here, related to site planning in commercial zones. That's where my heightened awareness is. It's not, it's the emphasis, or the area where I'm concerned is what happens in commercial zones. And I'm not, I'm suggesting that, the bottom line is, I am prepared to make a motion that we accept in Placerville, site plans. I'm not talking about the variance for a window, or the awnings, or some of the other, not as difficult items, but for site planning in all commercial districts, that those be done by licensed professionals. And that, what are licensed professionals? That would be an architect, a civil engineer, a professional engineer, and surveyors can do site planning under certain conditions. Because I think where we get into trouble is, it's part of the computer era, where people can draw lines, but maybe they don't know what all those lines mean all the time, or they don't quite know how to relate those lines to the real world. And the licensed professionals learn how to do that, to integrate topography, drainage, parking lot layouts, encroachments, curbs and gutters, those sorts of things. Because you get tested on those ideas, those topics, and then in your course of a normal practice, you're involved with those a lot. When people who can draft on a computer but aren't necessarily licensed professionals, they can put the lines on the page, but then they might, you know, it's just lines. It's not that totally integrated project. I'll be the first one to admit that we don't want to add even more fees to projects. You know, we don't want somebody else in our, the pockets of our people doing commercial projects. But it also works the other way. By using the design professional, hopefully you're going to do this, you know, you're going to have, not have to come back to the trough so many times to get your approvals, and that's kind of money well-spent by using those professionals. I don't see this as like the Architects' Job Protection Act. You know, there aren't that many of these things that happen, so none of us are going to make a lot of money on this. But I think to upgrade downtown, in particular, both in terms of the appearance, but then also just sort of the underlying sort of engineering of things, the drainage, the parking lot layouts, accessibility, those sorts of things, that we do need the licensed professionals involved. And I just think it's, as we, you know, kind of try to move the city forward, that it's a step worth taking. And I was trying to think, and I would throw this out for questions from my fellow commissioners, I was trying to figure out, if we pass this emotion that says, yes, we want licensed professionals to prepare site plan documents in our commercial zones, I was trying to figure out, well, where's a poison pill for that so that the staff could decide if it's a smaller project, then maybe you don't have to do that? And that's where you can provide some relief, when somebody comes and says, I need to add one ADA, you know, one accessible parking stall, or three, or whatever. So, I would throw that out kind of as a question. But for discussion purposes, I think in a motion, you know, I would make a motion, I'm not making this motion now, I just want you guys to hear where my thinking is. You know, I would move that site plan review applications, conditional use permit applications, and variance requests will be only accepted for review by the Placerville Planning Department if the accompanying site plan documents are prepared by a licensed civil engineer, surveyor, professional engineer, or an architect. So, that's kind of where I'm headed. And in that, to finish up, I think in doing this, you know, it doesn't mean just because you're using the licensed professionals that it will be perfect, because, you know, there can be not-so-good licensed professionals. And at the other end of the scale, there are unlicensed people that can rival the licensed people in terms of their ability to pull projects together and communicate graphically with information. But by requiring the professional licensing, we're dealing with most of the situations that will occur, in terms of just sort of day-to-day application of it. But in so doing, we have to kind of recognize that, well, there may be those professional professionals that don't prepare the best documents, and at the other end of the scale, we not, you know, that person that's not licensed but can do those documents, at least they're going to be able to get along with their design professional better, they'll be able to communicate, with the result being, it'll be easy for us, and more importantly, it's easier for the applicants. So, that's where I'm at.
On your, on your motion, the only thing that I think you left out that you've been saying is in commercial zones.
Yeah. Yeah. You're right, I did leave... I did leave out part of it. It would, the preliminary part would be that we make a finding that is in the best interest of the city of Placerville for all site plans, for all commercial zones, and Placerville be prepared by a properly licensed design professional.
Okay.
So, I left out Item 1.
Chair Wolf, if staff could make a comment on that. Staff would recommend that the commission maybe, maybe throw a broader net, meaning that rather than saying all projects in commercial zones, just state all commercial, industrial, or multifamily projects. I think multifamily would generally fall into those same concerns and issues that you raised regarding the commercial project, whereby all the players in the application process are relying on a very adequate and accurate site plan and drawings. So, when staff reviews it, staffs are reviewing these plans up against our codes, and again, a lot of it's measurement. If the measurement is incorrect, well, then, our decision-making and recommendation then to you or to the council will be flawed. And of course, it'll eventually come to some point, when the project is being constructed, that all of a sudden, it's determined that, wow, the measurement was wrong, they're not meeting setbacks, we got to go back to the drawing board, if you will, maybe with variance applications and revised site plans and that sort of thing. It does, it does happen. So, I think, you know, Chair Wolf, some of your comments were well-taken, that it protects everybody in the process, from the applicant to the staff, to the decision-makers, meaning that the commission and the city council, if they're an ultimate decider on a particular project, so. But that's why I would go ahead and suggest that maybe a little bit broader net, rather than just commercially zoned projects, but the category would be all commercial, industrial, multifamily projects.
So, I would, I would observe that what, what got us here was a site plan that was missing some pretty fundamental information, and, you know, benchmarks and dimensioning, to name a couple of things. And so, I think that, that instance demonstrates the necessity for taking these steps, so that it'll eliminate a lot of confusion on the part of applicants who do have a recent copy of AutoCAD or something like that in the garage, and I think it just moves towards making it a more professional and repeatable process. So, I concur with the chair's recommendations with your friendly amendments. Thank you. Another thing that comes to mind is the notion that these design professionals, they kind of have skin in the game. I mean, they're licensed, there's governing bodies, there's the licensing boards, that sort of thing. And when somebody is trying to skirt the edges of what is covered by Engineering, Architecture, Surveying Practice Acts, and the unlicensed professionals are, they are allowed to work around the margins of that. I mean, that's allowed for in the, in the state law, in the Business Professions Code. But when you come right down to it, you know, that you want those, most of the time, those licensed professionals are going to really care about what they're giving you. They're not going to just throw it against the wall and see if it's going to stick, rather than trying to really learn, you know, what's really going on. So, I'm reacting a little bit from that. And it's not just that particular project. I mean, I've seen several over the years where, when basic information is missing, and then we all kind of squirm and struggle around it, and you want to be polite and civil, but I think it's a way of kind of leveling the playing field, and then also making the expectations for the applicant, who's always swimming upstream with this extreme amount of information they have to provide, they're going to have better guidance, I think. And that's going to translate into time and money for them.
So, I'm confused, the sales pitch notwithstanding. I'm looking at the site plan review application requirements submitted by staff. Quote, "15 copies of plan sets submitted on 24-by-36 sheets or smaller, drawn to scale and of sufficient size to clearly show all details. Dimensioned property lines and all building setbacks. Dimensioned existing and proposed on- and off-site improvements. Dimensioned existing and proposed buildings in square footage. Dimensioned parking spaces and aisles." Vicinity, on and on and on. It seems to me that all of the information that is being suggested to be achieved by making a requirement, your proposal synthesizes down to a new requirement, okay? That all of the information that would be achieved by that is already here in the checklist, and that it really is incumbent upon staff to evaluate whether or not what is submitted is sufficient or not. Now, the argument I suppose could be made that, well, if you automatically go through a licensed professional, then the likelihood of having something not be acceptable to staff, or less staff work would, you know, that'll be minimized. But at the same time, all of the information and all the requirements are already set forth. And so, I'm, I'm less, I'm less inclined to add another requirement, and while it's starting out with commercial and multifamily property projects in broad net, there's very little, it's the chicken's nose under the tent, okay? Since we don't have camels, we have chickens. And it's a slippery slope then to just making it a broad brush, and this is that incremental invasion, frankly, from a, well, this is a really great idea, the road to Hades is paved with good ideas and good intentions, that when it's just, it's, I don't know that it's necessary. In all the years that I've been on commission, and that project that came before us that really spurred this, yes, there were a lot of learning lessons with that project at many, many levels. But I'm less inclined to have a knee-jerk reaction based on one project out of all the many projects I've had the opportunity to review and decide on as a planning commissioner, than to make this big jump. So, I'm not going to be in favor of the motion. That's all, I guess.
You know, I think that the list that Member Friend alludes to there is kind of, demonstrates a different point to me, and that is, is that there's no way that you can create a list in a document like that that will serve every possible eventuality or combination or permutation of facts on the ground. And so, to my, to my way of thinking, it makes an even stronger case for having someone who has the background and the understanding knows when certain of these dimensions are germane to a project, certain are not germane to the project. Because, actually, I'd be happier if less detail was there, because you're giving people a set, a Heathkit level of directions, you know, bend wire, check the box. And then, the person who in good faith works through this laundry list of items rolls up in thinking in good faith that they've met all the requirements, all the requirements are implied by their presence in that, in that set of requirements. And conversely, the absence of a requirement that may be very germane to a particular application, they have no way of knowing that that's required in this case. And that's where I think that having some professional review is worthwhile. I mean, my vivid recollection was in that, in that open meeting, when we were presented with that drawing, we were acting in the mode of site plan review in entirely the wrong context and place and time. So, I, and I'll, you know, I'll admit some bias, you know, I come from a family of engineers, my grandfather was a PE, and there's reasons for having somebody who has a comprehensive understanding of the subject matter. So, I'll be in favor of it. Just a thought that comes to mind is that in the residential realm of design and the application of building codes, the, most states, and California in particular, over the years, have gone to great lengths to maintain the ability for the individual homeowner to get through it on their own without having to pay for professionals, so where if you can use the checklist, you can get through it, you can make it happen. That's unfortunately getting a little more complicated now that pretty much all residential construction has to be fire-sprinkled now. So, the chicken is in the tent, even there, on the residential side.
And why are you going to feed it?
You know, well, that's what I'm, the reason I bring that up is, I think it's really good that, that individual homeowner that wants to build their dream home project can still get through it, in most cases, without having to have design professionals, because there's specific, there's specific provisions in the building code that allow them to do that. I think on the, in the commercial world, it's just a different level of play, and you can have the checklist and say, for example, provide a dimensioned plan, but somebody who's maybe done residential work, maybe done some very small parking lots, sure, they can put some dimensions in there, but they don't go the full next step of, well, okay, are the dimensions all tied into datum points? Are they tied into face of curve, that sort of thing? So, I think it's just, it is a level of professional participation that I just think we need.
So, the trigger seems to be commercial, non-commercial. And so, are you going to argue that any and all commercial properties require this level? And you can't envision any commercial projects, any sole proprietor, small business, that's going to do, that's going to do something, being able to do it without, without this professional stamp of approval, which I don't know, speaking to Commissioner Lowry's point, would necessarily dot all the i's and cross all of the t's. Everyone finishes at the top of the class, and everyone finishes at the bottom of the class. So, I, for one, don't automatically buy a panacea of some professional licensure automatically is going to guarantee that everything is going to be done, okay? Your likelihood is higher. But, okay, but, but again, we're doing a blanket on all commercial, as opposed to any projects of a certain size or some other impact being subject to this. We're just blanketly assigning this requirement to all commercial properties, and I, again, I just, I just don't support that approach.
Well, I think, you know, based on my comments earlier, if I, if I knew how to come up with it, and I would throw this out to my fellow commissioners, I think there could be kind of a lower threshold to accommodate those smaller projects. I'm just looking for the language. Because, but I'm not willing to give up, you know, in terms of... language. Because, but I'm not willing to give up, you know, in terms of the ultimate good of this, because there might be that small percentage of difficulty. But I want to recognize that. So unless we can come up with something creative, that's kind of where we're at.
And to the staff, if I may, do we have any idea as to the preponderance of this approach in other communities, particularly those of similar size demographic as Placerville? I mean, I can imagine if I'm in Sacramento, for example, or Roseville, they're going to require everything. But in the smaller communities, just out of curiosity?
It's kind of across the board. It's, I've seen very strict and scrutinizing checklists from communities like, well, this might be more of an affluent suburb, but, you know, the Aptoses, the SoCal's, the, if you're looking, if you're asking about a foothill community such as Auburn or Grass Valley for a commercial, I can't speak specifically, but my recollection is that some of them do. Some of them, if it involves really any turning of dirt, like I said earlier, they require at least the site plan be prepared by a civil or a surveyor for them to even get to some decision-making body. So it's kind of all over the board.
It's interesting that you said turning of dirt. You know, and it's interesting, in the Howe project, by the way, that really wasn't a new project. I mean, that was really an exceptional circumstance in and of itself. It wasn't somebody was coming in with, here's a new project, I want to do this kind of thing, and we're going to turn dirt. It's kind of a different circumstance. I would just prefer that this be given back to staff for some consideration as to what would trigger this requirement. And I'm hearing at least some acknowledgement that perhaps it isn't necessary to have it blanket across all commercial properties. And so if that's the case, then we don't have to, we can certainly vote for it as it is, and I would vote against it as it is. But if there was some sort of reasonable application of the requirement, then, you know, I would hope that we could pursue that. That's.
Anybody else?
Just, the question to giving it back to staff is, it's, I'm not sure that I'm satisfied that we need to delay it. I think we can vote on this tonight.
We were talking about the type of project that this would be required on. I'll use an example. I belong to a church here in the county, in the county, not in the city. And we had an opportunity to get a C-Train box. C-Train boxes are designed to withstand the elements. They're not going to fall apart. And so I prepared a drawing where it was going to sit on the property, took it into the county. The first person to look at it says, oh, this has to be, this has to be done by a licensed civil engineer. It would have cost more for the licensed civil engineer than it would have been for the box. Luckily, somebody walked by and he asked the question, and he says, no, that really is beyond the scope of what we're looking at. So I would be in favor of this if we leave, in some way, the discretion of the staff, that they can take and intervene in certain circumstances. We can't do it on size. We learned that on a parking lot up here on Main Street. It can't be, because just its seven stalls, that's not going to work. So it's got to be where the staff looks at it and says, yeah, I can see that you have this. It meets the requirements for whatever you're doing, like the awnings. We're not going to, we're not going to require an architect to design an awning for everybody that comes in here from Main Street that wants an awning. And so I think the same thing could apply to this, that we need to have the ability of the staff to intervene where appropriate. And how you put that in there, best of luck.
Can you guys help? Is there, I guess I'm trying to, we're trying to figure out what would be the maximum threshold for the staff?
Well, before maybe staff can provide that, I do want to, since we do have a public member here, and really before you take any action tonight, I don't know if the member wants to speak, but certainly has the opportunity to do so. Lynette did go through this process. She hand-delivered this particular property and plan development through the process years ago. She can maybe echo or be somewhat contrary to, now granted, this project was a little bit different than perhaps a parking lot on Main Street. But she has gone through the process. I don't want to make you speak, but we do.
Except, that was a really slick way of reminding me that I forgot the public hearing part of the public hearing. So if there's, we can stop our discussion for a few moments, I guess, and if there's anybody in the public who does want to address this, and you've had some experience, but don't feel any pressure. This would be your opportunity.
I could weigh in, in the interesting conversation. I tend to, with all due respect to Commissioner Lowry, I understand the need for continuity, if you will. But I tend to agree with Commissioner Friend when he's recognizing things that could become cost-prohibitive to small business. I think we're all very sensitive to that, especially these days. And quite frankly, I like the idea of language being interjected in so that staff does have some reasonable flexibility. I think it's difficult for them, because I know that they, it's really nice to be able to work within a frame of requirements. But when something is reasonable and not necessary, like you were talking about the awnings on Main Street, I think that in cases like that, when it's just not necessary, that there should be a waiver process. Even if that waiver process is just a really, I don't know, maybe a paragraph that the applicant writes and they come before you if you'd grant that waiver. I don't know. But there you go. But I appreciate Commissioner Friend's language and being sensitive to the chicken's head under the tent. I think that it's, it is a slippery slope, and I think that there specifically needs to be language that does not impact small business in a negative way, especially when they're doing, fulfilling ADA requirements. So you have these big cost prohibitive requirements where they, by law, have to adhere to, and then you're adding on to it, even if it is as simple as a ramp, when I would guess that any one of you men in the building could build a ramp. And then you have something like that that's going to cost, you know, even if it's fifteen hundred dollars, in a small business, from talking about a city of Placerville, that's cost prohibitive. You know, there's people living off of that profit margin in our community. Anyway, there you go, my two cents.
Thank you. Any questions for her? All right, thank you. We'll close that part of the hearing and bring it back to us.
So I'll just ask you what your thought would be. And so my logic here, the logic I'm saying is, okay, if we're going to require something, if something's going to be required of an applicant, then I'd like to know that there's clear value, that it's absolutely meeting a definite objective and achieving value for the specific project, okay? So what would be your thoughts of amending the current process or adding to the current process that, such that, and I'd like to hear from staff's thoughts on this, your visceral reaction for sure, that upon review, the staff, it's within the purview of staff to require that an applicant have their project prepared, as we've been discussing. On some middle, staff looks at it and says, oh, no, this is what you need, you really need to go get. And leave the discretion there, as opposed to making it automatically mandatory in every single project. Staff has the discretion to say, oh, this project is really well done, it's really well put together, which we've had those as well, right? And then they can do, and I believe they have the competency and the professional ability to make that evaluation, and then we're not doing this blanket approach on everyone just because.
And I would support the insertion of what I would call staff circuit breaker language that achieves that end. So that staff can do as member Friend describes, they give it, you know, the first impression test and make that call. So then it's not a blanket requirement, and we have some humans in the loop. How does staff feel about being able to determine that threshold?
Thank you, Chair Wolf. I think staff already has that discretion. I think staff has the discretion now to require professionally-prepared drawings commensurate with the level of complexity of the project. So I think, I like Commissioner List's example of the box. I mean, we get sea-land containers. Somebody may be building a storage shed or something, and it could be a commercial shed or something like that. So if it's something fairly simple, right, we probably do not need a professional surveyor to prepare the drawings if it meets, if it has all the dimensions and everything in there, because it's something where an inspector can rarely go out and just measure when the footings are put in place, that kind of thing. But whenever you're talking about the more complex project, especially development of a commercial project, whether it's frontage improvements, grading, all of that, we require that those be prepared by a professional, period. And I think most jurisdictions do as well. So my recommendation, then, to sort of, to get over the issue of a blanket requirement for even the most simplistic of projects to require professionally-prepared drawings, is where we would just insert into our application process that in all, you know, commercial, industrial, multifamily projects, then these plans must be prepared by a licensed professional unless waived by the director. Done.
So if you're going, if you're going to do something like that, then the applicant has to know that there's some, they have some mechanism to petition or request that. So at the time, right, so someone's going to come in, they have to pull an application, I presume. I haven't done this, but I'm assuming the process applicant, they get the application, right? So at the time, the application needs to be clear, then, to the applicant that they have the opportunity to petition for a waiver from the director for that submittal. It has to be done upfront, otherwise, everyone's going to go and do it.
So that, if I could, that would have to be added to these application materials.
Correct. It would be written on the application. So the applicant is making the case, well, do I really have to, you know, pay some professional five thousand dollars when five thousand dollars is all it's going to cost me to put in this storage building?
Which suggests to me, then, just as I kind of think this through, I mean, and I like the direction that the discussion's taking. Now, I'm just trying to think through the logistics of how this actually works, the process. Because somebody has an idea for a project, they're going to come in and get the application. How would the director even know whether or not it's got to be prepared? The applicant would actually have to do it first and say, requesting this be waived and submit it that way. Then the director, then someone's going to look at it and say, no, you're going to have, you're going to have to get the professional. So I think the applicant is going to have to have the opportunity to demonstrate that they can do a sufficient, they can put forth a sufficient application with all the dimensions and the detail necessary first. And then the planning department still has the ultimate authority to say, hey, you're going to have to have this done professionally. Otherwise, I can't see how it could work otherwise.
Yeah, some homework and investment has to be done first.
Yeah.
But then, by allowing the planning staff to go yea or nay, at least, you know, by having kind of the requirement in place that they be prepared to this higher standard, and yet give the staff the ability to lower that standard, because that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, so some language, like, we encourage, while we encourage applicants to seek the professional assistance, et cetera, et cetera, it's not automatically required. However, the planning department may still require it if the submittal, you know, is deemed to be inadequate. Something along those lines?
And wouldn't the staff be looking for that burden, though, to be placed on the applicant in terms of, rather than you having, being stuck with, well, okay, I know this guy, or it's just a little tiny project or whatever. You need to see something?
Well, yes, I think the burden would be placed on the applicant. We would just make it clear on the application. And I think it's going to be the exception where a project wouldn't require professionally-prepared drawings. Because at some point, and basically what we're talking right now is typically going through the discretionary application process, a conditional use permit or a site plan review that's giving the entitlement to move forward with the project. Well, if somebody's going to move forward with a project, they have already probably engaged professionals that are preparing the drawings that will be submitted for construction. Those have to be prepared by professionals. And so it just means that they're going to maybe prepare preliminary drawings prepared by professionals to get through the entitlement phase, the discretionary part of the application. But when they go to construction, they're going to be professionally-prepared drawings.
I don't know if that solves our, if we take the Howe project as case in point, I'm not sure that that solves the problem we're having, we were having with that. I don't know.
Well, I guess if I may, Mr. Chairman, the bottom line still rests with staff. We can require professionally-prepared drawings anyway. It's just showing the public, showing the applicant that, hey, if you can demonstrate the simplicity of your project where it's not really necessary, then we can certainly waive that requirement. But they still have to be good, adequate, drawn to scale, dimensioned out drawings, so that we don't get into the situation that I believe Chair Wolf mentioned in an earlier application. We had a parking lot that was just floating, wasn't even tied to anything.
Over several submittals, by the way. So I have a question for my fellow commissioner, a friendly question. The, how do you feel about the waiver insertion in that, that their discretion?
Well, that's the only way I'd vote for it. I think that, I think that's, I think that's an, we're, in most cases, I think we're talking about secondary applications. Somebody has a building, somebody has a parking lot, a piece of property, they're going to make a change. They're already using it, they're going to make a change to it. We're not talking about the guy, you know, this project. It's quite obvious, somebody is not going to take and invest that kind of money without getting a professional.
Yeah, you're right.
It's a secondary market that we're really looking at.
These aren't the projects that are the problem.
Say that again?
These aren't the, these larger projects.
Absolutely.
We're in agreement. But where the time and money gets spent is on those other projects. So we can't minimize them. That's just the way I look at it.
So I'd like to, I'd like to offer this now, because based upon what staff has just indicated, essentially what we're asking for, in some ways, staff already has that power.
Right.
They already have it. It seems to me that really what needs to happen is a change in the application process such that the applicants know right up front that this is emphasized, that staff has the right to require the project to be prepared by the licensed professional, and may exercise, and the applicant has forewarned that staff may exercise that discretion. I don't think that's really probably that apparent right now. It's there. The staff has that authority, and they could exercise. But I think what needs to happen, then, is it needs to really be brought to the individuals, the applicant's attention that they could exercise this. Because otherwise, because we already have it.
Would the chair entertain our member of the public returning to the podium?
Sure. Only if the member of...
Only if the member, only if the member of the public will entertain it.
Yeah.
All right, we'll reopen the public hearing and I will get chastised later for doing so. Go ahead.
Just to go to Commissioner Friend's concern about value being placed on the, actually going and hiring an engineer. I was just wondering if the city engineers could do some sort of plan check that that's really what determined because if what they have in front of them demonstrates what the need is, then that would be sufficient. There'd be no reason to go get a licensed professional. So I was just thinking that if Cindy, if there was maybe a small plan check fee to the city engineer that looked at it and determined whether or not a waiver would be appropriate.
Staff's response to that would be probably not. Simply speaking, you put a lot of liability on the city engineer, a licensed professional, and that licensed professional is not going to rely on something and make comments on something that isn't also prepared by a licensed professional. When it goes to our engineers, our engineers want to see professionally prepared drawings. So we're talking about the discretionary phase, the entitlement phase of a project.
Can I make kind of a, you know, I think, where I feel like we've gotten to, 618 reminds me of the old country judge saying, you know, hard cases make bad law. And I, I think that, speaking over only for myself, you know, the iterative nature of 618 and my sense that we're some hail mary passes thrown at that, at some point, I almost feel like maybe we're reacting to a situation which is far enough outside of the norm that we do not need to take prescriptive action at this time. It may be that we have these processes available to us already in your span of authority and span of adjudication, that's not the word I'm looking for, but anyway, we may try to...
Elegantly stated, Commissioner Lawrie.
Oh, God bless you. Thinking about your ministerial oversight. So I have a question along that same line because I'm sort of kind of drifting that way myself. What would be, I mean, the staff has heard the discussion, we all have similar concerns, we just kind of have maybe different approaches to how to get there. I'm just questioning, what would be best for the staff? I mean, could this just be left where you maybe fine tune your application documents to emphasize that, that authority that you already have anyway? Bigger print, front page, whatever it takes, just so that we're not in the 618 Main Street situation again where right up front, you know, if you get a substandard submittal, it's really apparent right from the beginning that you can give it back and require the professional participation. So I guess what I'm asking is, do we need motion? Do we need anything like that or can this kind of be handled at the ministerial level, recognizing the things that we've all, the concerns that we all have?
I think you've heard from the director that, that we currently have the discretion. Ultimately, any project that comes before you, since you are making the decision, unless it's appealed from many of these projects, therefore you really have the ultimate authority to, to require additional information. And that additional information could be the submittal of a document that's prepared by a licensed professional if there's some ambiguity as to, you know, the floating nature of a project. So I think we do have it kind of covered, but if, if there was some sort of emphasis that you wanted us to provide on, on the applications, we'd be happy to do that. But in this case, we could probably, based on what, what you've heard tonight, I will add that we do, it is a question that comes up from an applicant. It's one of the first things they ask. Does this plan need to be prepared by, by a professional? And getting back to one of the speakers earlier, without seeing what the plan is, how would I know really how to answer that question? So of course, I want to encourage them to submit a design document, design professional document because in the end result, as, as the director mentioned earlier, at the building permit stage, they're going to have to hire that individual anyway or that firm to prepare those documents for building permit. So we encourage, well, I want to encourage them to engage them with that design professional upfront to help them massage through the process, either representing them here to answer questions that you have. I'll stop talking, but I think, I think perhaps our current language does cover that. But we're here to help facilitate anything that you need.
I would be a little bit argumentative about, well, if the language covers it, how do we end up in a 618 Main Street situation?
Well, as I mentioned in a previous meeting, that particular item, this person, that applicant's not here, but I did send them a letter. I outlined in detail what needed to be provided. I met with the applicant. That applicant told me the application that I submitted is what I want to take before the planning commission. That's what you got. I made the effort to support myself and to support the city. It was conditioned, as you may remember, originally conditioned, that they would be required to come back with all that information. So the original request from staff to approve was to provide, require them to come back with all the details. But in defense of this department, we did provide that applicant with an avenue to correct their application, to make it complete. But then we were told, as every applicant has the right to do, they can submit whatever they want. If they want to submit a blank piece of paper to you for a subdivision, technically, we would have to receive it, take it in front of you, and you could make the decision based on our recommendation to deny such a project without the details.
Okay, that, that's a disconnect for me. I totally don't understand that because if staff has the authority to require that it be prepared by a licensed professional, why, why don't you apply that then at that point? And similarly, since, since that authority already exists at the staff level, I presume that authority then exists with the planning commission? We, could we not, could we not condition it?
Yeah, Chair Wolf, if I could.
Resubmit? I'm a little bit confused on that.
Comment to what Commissioner Friend is saying. Basically, staff does have, have the opportunity to stop the application process and that's basically deeming the application incomplete.
But how does that, how does that relate to, how does that relate to what I've heard say, and I'm sorry, and I'm sorry to push this point, but what I've heard say is that staff does have the authority that we, that we started this discussion trying to impose, that staff does have that authority. How, how is that related to the staff can deem an application incomplete as opposed to staff directing the applicant, exercising staff's authority that I understand from the discussion staff has to direct the applicant or require the applicant to have their, their application prepared by the licensed professional? Are those, different or those the same?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Friend, could you ask that again?
Yeah, let me, I'm sorry, I'm confusing myself. So let's see, you have, you have an application, it's really, it's inadequate? And frankly, the 618 was inadequate. And Andrew outlined all the things that were inadequate for that particular project. It seems to me, if I understand this, what the authority that staff has, it was at that point that staff's, staff should have rejected that application and said, this needs to be prepared by a licensed professional because it's deficient. And your term that you used a second ago was inadequate, I think is what your term was. So, so when you find an application that's inadequate, then I think that's probably when you have to exercise your authority to require the licensed professional do the preparation. Does that sound about right? Is that where we would be? Is that, that's all?
That is correct.
I think that's what needs to happen.
Bottom line, the staff is just entirely too nice. I don't think they should be taking on these solomonic duties.
But there's an interesting thing though that Andrew mentioned and that was the applicant having the, I would guess, the legal standing to be able to say, no, that's what I'm submitting. I'm curious about where that derives from. Where does that, what's the derivative of that?
On the Permit Streamlining Act, staff has the ability to deem the application incomplete. And I think...
But then facing that is...
The applicant can, can appeal that decision. I think the applicant would have the ability to appeal that decision.
And then staff could recommend at the appeal that this really should be prepared by a licensed professional, in which case the commission is going to say, we agree with staff.
Yeah. But I don't think my, I still don't get it. Where does the applicant have that right to just say, with all due respect, Mr. Director, this is my application, that's what I'm submitting?
I'd have to review our code because staff may have the ability to deem it incomplete and there is no avenue for the applicant to submit a paper napkin drawing.
Although that's what kind of happened in the situation we're talking about. That's kind of what happened.
Quite.
It wasn't quite that bad. The, I'm sorry for my knee jerk. Well, it, it, it sounds like the staff has the authority to do what I would have moved that you do anyway. And that is, you know, if you deem it necessary, you can require the preparation of plans by licensed professionals when, when there's any indication that whatever, what you're going to get or what you've already gotten is substandard. That's a true statement?
I think probably the simplest way to, you know, at least move forward with, I think where the commission and staff would like to go is we could add some additional language to our application so it's a little more clear that, you know, depending upon the complexity of the project, it may be the preparation of professional drawings wouldn't be necessary and the application can still be deemed complete. Because when you see in the application processor, these checkboxes, so the applicant is supposed to check the boxes and then the staff is supposed to check the boxes. And so if it can be checked, it's a complete application to come in to be submitted for fees. We still have 30 days to review a more in-depth level to determine whether the application is complete or the staff would like more information. We have that ability to do that. So I still think that there's a benefit to at least daylighting that option in our application.
Along the, along the lines of additional language, then I would suggest that your language would highly encourage applicants to have their projects prepared by a licensed professional and the applicant is at risk if the applicant uses it not to, that they realize there is some risk that they, that it may still be required. And I think by having some very, very language, it is kind of really pulls their nose over it might also help. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, if staff would just give another comment, again, I think it's commensurate with the complexity of the project. If we're talking about a box, a box, you know, where the planning staff may not route it up to engineering for their review, may not be necessary at all. But if there is a site plan and there are issues with the site and our engineering staff have to review it, they're not going to put their PE on the line.
So I think that, to kind of bring this to completion, I think the staff is aware of all of our different flavors of concerns on this and, and it seems like a simple solution is to just kind of maybe revisit the language on the applications and make it a little clearer, more, a little more apparent, the, you know, the powers that the planning staff does have. And I think, I think we've had a good discussion here, there's a lot of issues. Fortunately, we're all on the same team. The idea is we just want to have better projects and the way we can do that is to get the processes better. Any other comments? So doesn't seem like a motion's necessary. So unless anybody has any objections, we'll close that item. And if I can find my, no, no. Okay, so we'll close that item and move on to matters from planning commissioners? And matters from staff?
Oh, the, this pamphlet? Is that for us this evening?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Friend. I wanted to pass those out. One of the, when this chicken keeping ordinance went through the process, we provided, I believe, when the draft ordinance was provided to you and to the council, we provided a copy of what the city of San Diego provides to their public and it was a nice little brochure. So staff, just I believe we mentioned to you and we also mentioned to the city council that if the ordinance were to pass, that we would prepare a pamphlet that could be provided to the public just to help them with general information on the keeping of chickens in the city. So that is now available to the public. Feel free to look at it. If any of you have any questions or comments or you think we can improve upon it, we can always change it.
I have just a couple, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Chickens and hens are used interchangeably in this. Is that, is that pretty typical? It says chickens, 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 and then it says hens need an appropriate environment to lay eggs. That's the only place where hens show up as opposed to chickens.
But, I mean, look at, look at the first page.
Sorry?
The keeping of chickens, open parentheses, not rooster, closed parentheses. The very, the very first page, if you have, if you have it folded in that, there you go.
Chickens, not roosters. Keeping chickens in the city of, I'm not sure, maybe, I'm not sure where, oh, right. I'm just wondering why we had the word hens on, over here in the one, where everywhere else it said chickens, that's all. That, that's a minor point. Second, I believe on A, B, C, D, E, enclosures must be set back 20 feet from any property line. That I do remember. And it says, or structure used for human habitation. I don't recall that. So if someone had, has a chicken coop and they want it up next to their house, but it's, it's more than 20 feet away from any adjacent property line, did we preclude them from having it next to their house? I don't recall that. We did? Okay, fair enough. Okay, question and, question and answers. I believe the word is, may I sell the eggs as opposed to can I? Sorry, may I? And then I would ask if this could go out in the water bills?
We're not proposing to do that.
Okay. I would ask if possibly it could.
It's a budgetary.
I would recommend that we do it.
Yeah, it's a budgetary item.
Okay, fair enough.
Matters from staff?
Yes, in the month of December, at this particular moment, I think you guys are going to get a pass. But there are some actions taken or will be taken at council. A couple of items that have already gone through this, this body, one of which is the sidewalk dining ordinance. That'll be heard on December 13th. The housing opportunity overlay amendments related to the rigid orchard hill, we anticipate getting that as well. As well as the 618 Main Street, we just talked about that earlier. The appeal will be heard on that date.
On which day?
The 13th of December. So once again, at this, at this particular moment, we do not anticipate having a planning commission meeting during the month of December. But January looks like we're going to have a few and it could be that first meeting. So, and I don't have a calendar, but I know it's pretty close to January 1. So if you can let me know about, you know, absences and is it third? Okay, well then, that's a safe couple of days after that first. So I think you can expect to have an agenda on that evening. Director, would you, do you have any issues?
I think you covered, you covered it.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to all and I assume... Happy Thanksgiving to all, and I assume we have a consensus to adjourn. Thank you. Isn't democracy fun? She needs to get a life.
You are tough.
Always appreciate helping out with this.
Well, yeah, that's good.
We got here.
Show a good show.